Under NCGS 143-31811, personnel. Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Make a motion to go into closed session?
All in favor? Unanimous.
Okay, I want to make a motion to close closed session.
All in favor?
And then I want to make a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Motion to adjourn secondly.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting. Motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order if we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and law. If we all remain standing for a moment of silence, and I'd like for everybody today to maybe say a special prayer for people that are sick and people that have cancer. My wife was diagnosed with cancer again, and she's doing very well, but she's getting treatments, and she goes every day, and she meets people every day there, and they all have great attitudes. She tells me that she stops and gets flowers, and she stops and get cards, and she stops, and she said they all speak with positive attitudes and smiles on their faces. And I thought, and she told me that just yesterday, and I thought, well, I'm gonna mention today. She's been going through five or six weeks now, and she's got another week left of radiation, but these are people that could be, had bad attitudes, but they have great attitudes. So let's all be thankful for what we have, and I think that'd be a good note for a moment of silence, so we'll all have a moment of silence. You may be seated. All right, we've got some upcoming events coming to town. Tomorrow, we have Juneteenth. Join us for inspiring Juneteenth celebration filled with powerful spoken and performances, vibrant dance, and more come together to honor freedom, culture, and community in a day of reflection and joy. And I believe this is at Crossing Pass Park, and it goes from 6:00 to 9:00, and so I hope to see you there tomorrow. It'll be a nice celebration. Also, I'd like to mention on Saturday, we have, or we don't, but the VFW, which is I Consider Us, VFW has got a barbecue festival and fundraiser from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00. And I can't believe it, but it's only $10 for a plate of barbecue. I've seen some of the plates of barbecue around town that were a whole lot more expensive, and that's good barbecue. And if Rocco's cooking it, I don't know if Rocco's gonna be over there cooking, it's gonna be real good. So try to make it out there, because it's not only a barbecue, they have games, cornhole, pool, darts, horseshoes. They're gonna have a flag retirement ceremony at 7:00, so it'll be just for a good time, and I hope to see you there. So I'll be there, and I see, I think, Robin, you're gonna be there, and I know other people that'll be there. Please come. It's gonna be a good time, I can tell you that. Other than that, I think that's all for upcoming events. So that brings us to agenda additions and deletions, and I know we have some additions. Does anybody want to do Clarence? Give us a...
Let's do under old business, 10B, manager's contract.
We're gonna call it manager's salary.
Manager's salary, okay.
And that is under what now?
Let's do 10B, old business.
B.
Yes, sir. Or 9B, I'm sorry.
Be glad I don't hear well.
9B old business.
I knew what you meant. Okay, and I would like to...
9F.
9F.
There's already a B.
Let's make it 9F.
Okay. I put it under 9B. And then also, I'd like to add, and we can talk about this when it comes, about possibly changing our meeting at the next meeting from Tuesday to Thursday, and if we can't do it, that's fine, I will not be here, so for the next meeting, and if we can't do it, that's fine, we'll just move on. Y'all can have a meeting without me, but I'm gonna move that to, we can put that under, I don't think it really matters, old business, and we'll just put date for council. Huh?
9G.
9B.
G.
G as in golf.
B like...
G as in golf.
There we go. It'd have to be FG.
I'm looking at 9. Oh, I get it, I'm sorry, you're right. All right, so can I...
We have one more thing. Can we add item 7F, settlement for condemnation case, Town of Indian Trail versus DBC Contracting LLC, 24 CVS, 1874, to the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, Crystal, I didn't understand what you said.
Adding item 7F, settlement for condemnation case, Town of Indian Trail versus DBC Contracting LLC, to the consent agenda.
What are you asking for?
To add that item to the consent agenda.
Okay, you want to pull it off the...
I want to add it to the consent agenda.
Add it to, okay, all right, and I'm sorry.
Tell us again exactly what it is.
It's the settlement of the condemnation case, DBC Contracting. You all received a memo.
Yeah, okay.
Tell me what that is again.
DBC Contracting.
All right. All right, can I get a, do we need to make a separate motion for each one, or just make them all at one time?
All at one time, fine.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve all of those? Go ahead. Oh, Clarence, you want to do it?
All right, so am I doing them individually? Do I need to speak them individually, just like...
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
Motion to approve amended agendas.
All in favor? Unanimous. Very good, all right. That brings us to presentations. It brings Emerald Lakes, who...
Mr. Mayor, we have a brief video of the Emerald Woods event that was held very recently, and with the council's indulgence, we'll ask Bobby to play it. And the video is courtesy of Union County.
I have lived here at Emerald Woods for about seven years now, but very close knit community. We have talked about some of the challenges with the water. Some folks have gotten sick because of water from their wells, and we wanted to see if there was something we could do about getting water down here. So it wasn't until we came and approached the town and talked to them about some of our town representatives, and talked to them about some of the challenges we're having, and they said, let's, let us get together, let us talk to some folks. We gathered as a community, they wanted to meet everybody to get all their input, and when we did that, they realized we want to do something. They looked for resources and grants and things like that to help us get this waterline down the street for us, so we could connect and have clean, fresh water.
We appreciate the county coming in and helping us out, and we actually have another neighborhood too, Morse Park, that we hope to get it on good water. That's important that we have good water for our residents.
Thank you from the town to the county, to everybody that's had a little say into the contractors who did such a phenomenal job in here.
Very good, thank you, Bobby. Appreciate that, and we were lucky enough to be there, a lot of us were that day, and it's very important to have good water. And I know several other people in here that think the same thing, and hopefully, the next video will be your video.
Yes.
So anyway, well, thank you for that. And Scott, who did all the talking there, used to live in my neighborhood, and I thought he did a really good job too. So anyway, that brings us to public comments. By addressing council, you acknowledge you have read the town's public comment rules, and we'll abide by them. Our first speaker tonight is Tina Sykes Mosley. Tina, come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cohn and Council. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you. I am Tina Sykes Mosley. I'm the founder of Marcus Mothers Advocating for Real Change and Unwavering Support. On May 15, in collaboration with the Union County District Attorney's Office, we launched our very first homicide group support meeting here in Union County. On June 8, we hosted our very first Union County Stop the Gun Violence Rally in Monroe, which was well attended and demonstrated our community's commitment to addressing this critical issue. This Saturday at 7:30 p.m. at Gateway Park in Monroe, we are hosting a memorial and a candlelight visual for the family of Alvin Parsons, who was murdered on May 31st prior to the female officer being shot. The mission of Marcus, objectives of Marcus, number one, accountability for juveniles. We demand that juveniles be held fully accountable for murder irrespective of their age. Taking a life is a grave matter that deserves the serious consequences. Number two is parental responsibility. We advocate for holding parents accountable for the crimes committed by their children. Parents should face the prosecution to the fullest extent of the law when their children commit violent offenses. It is imperative that we ensure a sense of responsibility within the families. Number three, enforcement of the law. We call upon the courts to enforce the law as it is written, imposing a maximum penalty for all murderers regardless of the age, should receive life, should receive the life sentence without the possibility of parole. This includes holding parents responsible along with their children. Additionally, we cannot overlook the importance of grandparents' rights. Their voice and connection to the family are vital in addressing, for addressing and preventing violence within our community. On September 29, 2020, I lost my son. Marcus dropped Mosley to gun violence, so this is very important to me. As we continue this fight, I urge you to support our initiative. Your backing is essential for securing funds and using your platforms to raise awareness about this alarming pandemic of gun violence. Together, we can bring about meaningful change and ensure a safer future for our community. Together, we stand for justice, accountability, and protection of our community. Let us work collaboratively to bring about the change we so desperately need. I am Tina Sykes Mosley. I am the founder of Marcus Mothers Advocating for Real Change and Unwavering Support. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Stanfield?
Good evening, Mayor Cohn and the council. Thank you for letting me be able to speak this evening. I come before you because back on October 30, 2023, my son Christopher Stanfield was unfortunately, my only son, was killed in an automobile accident on Rock Hill Church Road. He was 17, he would have graduated from Porter Ridge High School this year. I come before you because Christopher was supposed to, was looking so forward to graduating from Porter Ridge, and I felt like he should have been honored. When I spoke to the principal, as well as a representative from Union County Public School System, they expressed to me that they would just have a moment of silence, that the student's name could not be called, and I felt like that was a disservice to his memory, as well as helping to bring peace to the family, as well as his friends that went to school with him. We did attend the graduation. I was given tickets for the graduation, I was given a yearbook, and as my sister and I sat there, the moment of silence lasted for about two minutes, in which my son's name could have been called. So my concern is, I'm appealing to you, if you could so graciously appeal to the Union County School Board, they said they would be meeting and discussing this over the summer, if you could appeal to them, that is very important for healing for the family, as well as for the students, and to honor the memory of that student that did not get a chance to walk across that stage, to have their name called, to also have a chair there with a cap and gown, and perhaps to allow the family to walk across the stage and receive a diploma or certificate in their honor. It would help with the grief process, which is a lifelong struggle. I thank you for your time.
Okay, that brings us to council feedback. Anybody like to say anything? I've got two things I'd like to say. Tina, I've had the honor to be around you now twice. Tina came to coffee with the mayor and brought Marcus up, which is, you know, I know what Marcus is, but mothers against...
Advocating for Real Change.
Right, okay. But it moved me somewhat, and you know, we had Trey come down, Trey Robinson come down, and we also had Sheriff Kathy here the one night, and we had people that also came in that had lost their children. And our children are, in my opinion, our greatest accomplishments, and very moving, and thank you for what you do, thank you for your movement, and thank you for helping families in what you do. And I hope people do get behind this and support each other, because you do need support. And Leslie, I've not heard that until tonight, and I got to scratch my head, which I think a lot of people in here tonight might have scratched their head and wondered why. We'd actually have nothing to do with, or no authority, or nothing to do with the school board, but I will mention it to people that I know, because it would have been a, I would have think the thing to do, would have been nice to recognize your son, who was going to graduate this year, correct?
Yes.
And kind of moves me to, or kind of aggravates me a bit that that didn't happen, and I know what it would have done for your heart, and probably a lot of other people. I don't understand it, but there may be a logical reason, but I will ask, I will ask. So thank y'all for coming. Go ahead.
Tina, one thing I think is really helping now is that law enforcement and the judicial system is starting to put the heat on the parents, who are not putting these firearms away, and I think in a lot of cases, they're getting charged with, I don't know if it's accessory to it or what, but I mean, we've got to get control, particularly these young kids that are grabbing guns and going out, and you know, they're not old enough to be and mature enough, and hadn't been taught properly, and so that has to change. And also for the, Leslie, for your situation, I'm really surprised, because even like when I was at Appalachian State with thousands of people, they always had a, when somebody was killed one way or another, they had a table with the yearbook open and flowers and that sort of thing, so shame on our school board for not doing something a little bit better. Thank you.
Okay, all right, well, let's move on. Law enforcement update. Come on up, Captain Moss.
All right. So real quick, I won't take up a whole lot of your time, I understand you may have, nevermind. So just give me a few stats for the month. We had a total calls for service for the month of May. I apologize, my mind just went way out in left field. We had 4,272 calls for service. Out of those 4,272, we took a total of 281 reports. Just to give you a few of the higher numbers, we had 152 alarms, 183 911 hangups, we had 172 business checks, had 66 follow-ups that we did, we had 1,935 preventative patrols, we served 207 civil papers, and I know this is kind of going over on the vehicle stuff for next month, but I know we have talked here recently about Deputy Henry and what he does, but most of these were his, I would say 95% of them. We had 81 improperly parked vehicles. I know we get calls all the time about folks who complain about how people park in our neighborhoods. We went out to 81 of them in a month, so we are answering those. And just to, I know I've been giving you the last few months, our investigations report, those guys were assigned 34 new felony cases this month, they closed 93. That was a pretty high number of clerics, but a lot of those are just, there's nothing to go on, and they're closed just because of time constraints. They made five felony charges, they wrote 19 search warrants and recovered two stolen motor vehicles, and I think the property value that they recovered was right, just, I sent it to you, I didn't write it down, but it was right under $80,000, yeah, $80,000. So those guys have been working pretty hard this month, or last month, but that's all I've got, unless you have anything else.
I have something to say to you. Saw you a lot at Family Fun Day, saw you a lot of deputies at Family Fun Day, not only law enforcement, but fire, law enforcement, and Parks Department, and I heard this a lot, and I even saw a lot of it on social media, what a good job y'all did, and how well it was run, and you guys, I felt like the same way. I could see that you were proud. It went off with basically no hitches, thousands of people, and it looked like that everybody had a good time. The only problem was the lines at night got long for the rides, and man, had to wait a long time to get on a ride, but the weather was beautiful, food was good, and people had fun, and you guys, it worked like clockwork, and that's not easy to do sometimes.
I can tell you, that wasn't just us. There is a lot of planning that went into that, and Parks and Rec, and town folks, I mean, and like I say, Fire Department, how many meetings did we have before that? Five, six maybe, with everybody? Not to mention what we had kind of done individually, but it was definitely a group effort, and it worked out well, and that is, I'll be honest with you, that's one event, I know it's large, but it's one event that I look forward to every year, so.
Thank you, and I do too, and Hayden, congratulations on, and staff, because all the staff, I saw staff there in the morning, out there working, helping people set up their booths, and it's something that you guys look forward to, and it's all for the people of the town and around the town. A lot of people come from everywhere to come to this thing.
I can tell you that there were several of the town folks and several of our folks, like some people come to that, and oh, well, it doesn't open till 2:00, and you know, everything's done after the fireworks go off at 9:30, 10:00. I know several of our folks, and several of the town folks, our policy, we can't work more than 16 hours a day, so some of that time we may have put on Sunday, but there were several of our folks that had 17, 18-hour days that day, so they did real well.
Thanks to everybody for a great job. Thank you for all you did, appreciate you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. There's no public hearings, brings us to old business, to Mr. Kramer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, last meeting, we came before you to present a few names for consideration for the grand marshal. We are back here this evening after you've had a chance to deliberate behind the scenes to receive the name that you are selecting for grand marshal. We will then take that, run a press release, and coordinate with that individual or group to make sure that they're ready for the July 4th parade.
Are you gonna give the names, or...
Yeah, so last time, we nominated Don Blankenberg. As you remember, we removed Don because he's already served previously. Jerry Harden and Bob Flippin.
And you've got a new list now, don't you, or where's that, us to make the motion, bring up the names and make the motion?
Yes, that is your prerogative right now.
Okay. Okay, is Jerry Harden and Bob Flippin, is that who we're choosing from?
No, their names are off.
Oh, they're off the list? Or do you have them on your list?
Those were the names that were submitted to me, that were presented last meeting, so...
I did talk to Bob Flippin, I thought, and I thought he said that he couldn't do it, or he didn't, he didn't do it, so I, and...
Well, the Lions Club told me that they had two names. They wanted Gail Ford, and they mentioned John Hemby, and so I think those are the two that we'll make a decision on.
I think somehow that might have bypassed you, I don't, did you not have those names?
I know that if those names would like to be considered along with them, absolutely so.
Okay, well, do I, does anybody want to put up a name, or...
I would recommend, I think Gail Ford has been one of the finest individuals that's ever been in this town, and he's married a lot of people, buried a lot of people, been very active in the Lions Club, and he's just, he is the salt of the earth, and so I would nominate him.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Gail Ford. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Tom wants to say something.
You want to?
Tom wants to say something.
Okay, Todd, go ahead.
Are we up on the floor for nominations, or we got a name, Gail Ford?
I thought we had two names.
I just made the motion for Gail Ford.
Hold on, so we got two names.
So Bob can't, don't want to do it?
Well, no, I don't think either one of those people were, I don't think, that's just what I was told.
I think they withdrew their names.
They withdrew, I think they withdrew their names, is what I think.
They withdrew what?
Withdrew their names.
Oh, they withdrew their names, okay.
Yeah, that's what I, I saw Bob at the thing, and asked him about it, and he said he withdrew, he didn't do it, and I don't know the other gentleman, so.
Yeah, and...
So but anyway, because we have a motion on the table, what motion you got is for who?
For Gail Ford.
For Gail Ford?
Has anyone talked to Gail Ford?
If anybody, do you know, has anybody talked to him?
They talked to him.
They did, who talked to him, though?
Joe Mucci.
Joe Mucci, so he can do it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I guess it's Gail Ford is up for motion. All in favor? Unanimous.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Hayden. All right, this brings up, okay, this is what I added to, no, I didn't, it's down here, this brings us up for B, budget adoption.
I'm not as tall as Andy. This is our last step in the budget process, is something we started in January, and tonight we're gonna ask you to approve a budget ordinance. Bobby, if you'll put up that first page, if you have that ability. So I'm gonna go through, quickly go through some things that we've talked about before. The way we put together a budget in North Carolina involves several steps. Before y'all get involved, we start looking at the fall about what the budget requests will do, and in January, the department, we provide you a schedule that you've approved, and so we're right on schedule, with the exception of two days, but that's cool. And so on one side of the House, you've got the department heads that are presenting their budget needs and figures... and figures in alignment with your priorities. You've got finance collecting those. Those all come together. I have meetings with department heads, I have meetings with finance, and at the same time, finance is having discussions with state officials about what the revenues will be. So we see a merging of expenditures on this side and revenues on that side. In the meantime, we schedule budget meetings with you, where we give you a progress report, and we talk about what the numbers are looking like, et cetera. Um, this year, we had two budget meetings. We invited each and every one of you, if you wanted to come in, sit down with the staff. You were certainly available to do that, and in fact, encouraged to do that. Consistent with our schedule, um, we released the budget to you probably in early May. We did a presentation at the first meeting in May. We had a public hearing on the twenty-seventh of May, as I recall, there were one, maybe one, maybe two speakers. Um, I gave you my recommendation when I presented the budget, and y'all had a very good discussion and debate, and y'all settled on seventeen cent. So, where do these numbers come from? These numbers come from the budget books, which you've seen, which you were first given approximately six weeks ago. And I'm not gonna read it word for word, but Section One talks about, uh, the anticipated expenditures, uh, and below that, on the next page, you also have the anticipated revenues, and we've spent some more time. Bobby, you wanna flip that to the next page? You see that right there? You have, uh, the, the third page, Bobby, if you'll do that, uh, it's a pile bill, stormwater utility, and then Section Five deals with debt service. So, on Section Six of that, it also allows you, and this is probably the most important part of that document, is it establishes the property tax rate for the next fiscal year. This is a document, the bu, the budget ordinance is a document in which you legally levy the property tax for the next year, and allow for the expenditure of funds to carry out the work that we need to do in town government. Uh, Section Seven deals with some permissible transfers, and they are all reported to, uh, the council at the next meeting, and if you follow our meetings, you'll know we'll have regular reports on, on those kind of things. We also talk a little bit about the, the debt service and capital reserve fund, where you have agreed to continue to set aside five cent off the top of the tax rate. I told you before, I'll tell you again, I think that was a smart move that y'all did so many years ago. Uh, there's Section Nine about the encumbrances, and Section Ten, basically, we're adopting the fee schedule and the rates for various services. Again, those fee schedules were covered in the budget book. Um, so, if there are no other questions, Mr. Mayor, we would simply need a motion to approve the budget ordinance.
There's no problem with, um, any comments from counsel?
One thing about the budget process is there are some things that we have a good eye of, and some that we don't, and I always consider, uh, some things as landmines that blow up on us, and we have no, had no clue what was gonna happen. Um, and so, a lot of these entrances that we are having replaced, corrugated in. But the main thing, uh, in our crystal ball that is always a tough one is our, uh, garbage contract, and we have absolutely no idea what we're gonna have to pay, and, uh, and we're all scared to death that we may get, uh, hit big time on that one. The sheriff's contract and the garbage are our two biggest things in the town, and comprise of about half of our budget total. And, uh, sheriff contract, you know, we're very close to the sheriff's office, so we always talk back and forth, and we know, but we always have a pretty good idea of what, uh, what our, our cost is gonna be there, but, you know, we, we, we put our garbage contract out, and then we, uh, we wait, and we find out who comes back with, uh, you know, with the, the best bid, and with all the uncertainties right now in the economy, um, we, we just have to cover ourselves. And, um, so, that's pretty much where we are with our tax rate, and we've got, uh, you know, of course, we just saw Emerald Woods, and we, uh, we put what, a half million dollars in that for the water. We got, uh, uh, half a, half a million probably, at least, uh, for Morris Park. We got a million dollars to, for a cor, replace corrugated underneath the, uh, the entrance into their subdivision. We had another million dollars someplace else, and we're gonna have other millions of dollars coming and, uh, surprise us. So, um, that's, um, that's why we came up with the, um, amount of, uh, tax that, um, we, we felt like, um, would cover some, a lot of these things.
So, for the citizens of Indian Trail, I would say, as I said before, these are your tax dollars, um, that we are, um, in charge of, and I, uh, challenge you to look at other municipalities. The reevaluations happened all around, all over the county. Take a look at, um, every municipality in Union County, look at the size of the municipality, and look at their tax rate, and, um, compare it to Indian Trails, and, you know, if you have any questions, then call up here to Town Hall, ask for the Finance Department, and, uh, I imagine they can explain any, or answer any questions that you have. But I challenge you first, uh, to look at the other municipalities and look at their tax rates. Or even call the other municipalities and ask what were their recommended managers', uh, tax rates. You may find that some of them were, uh, I, I know one municipality, very small one, I think their recommend, recommended, uh, tax rate was fifty-five cents. So, you compare that to, um, seventeen at Indian Trail, um, it's a big difference, so, and a smaller, lot smaller population.
Thank you. There's nobody else? Just, uh, since you brought this up, I happen to have, um, uh, the tax rates of all the surrounding areas, uh, the towns, you know, the bigger towns in Union County. Uh, our tax rate last year was eighteen and a half cents, and we lowered our tax rate to seventeen cents. Um, Stallings', uh, tax rate this year is, uh, almost nineteen cent, eight, eighteen point nine. Uh, Waxalls is thirty-one, and Monroe's is forty-four, compared to ours at seventeen. Uh, I did a, uh, a little evaluation on that. Uh, so, a, a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house in Indian Trail, uh, including, uh, I believe with the county, uh, you gotta, you're gonna pay twenty-four-hundred, uh, and sixteen dollars in tax for the year. If you live in a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house in Monroe, you're gonna pay over a thousand dollars more. You're gonna pay three-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. As a matter of fact, in Indian Trail, between Stallings, Waxall, Monroe, and Indian Trail, Indian Trail's got the lowest tax rate and the lowest, uh, of what you'll, you would end up paying for a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house. Uh, there, which is a little confusing to a lot of people, is our tax rates dropped, but your taxes went up on your homes because of your valuation of your house. Uh, my house particularly went up, I think, two-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars. So, a, as you see, my house went up in value, but tax rate dropped. So, an Indian Trail for a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house, which my, I'm not saying my house is four-hundred, but that's the, that's the median, uh, house in Indian Trails, four-hundred thousand. Your Indian Trail tax is going up approximately fifteen dollars a month, and there's a lot of different reasons for it. We all pay taxes up here also. But not one town that I know of managed to, to do, uh, revenue neutral, uh, which we all wish we could do revenue neutral, but there's a lot of reasons you can't do revenue neutral. Uh, roads, uh, the fact of inflation has been probably as, as bad as it's been over the years has, has created a lot of that. But, in my opinion, at seventeen cents, Indian Trail has one of the lowest tax rates of any town our size anywhere, anywhere. And I know people are gonna find, uh, Hemby Bridge, and they're gonna find these little, uh, towns, Fairview, well, with, with very little taxes, uh, but, but they don't have garbage, and they don't have, uh, uh, police, you know, they don't have police protection, that type thing. So, compare, comparably, and I've, I've got a lot more here, but I'm not gonna go through it, I don't think I need to. We live in a place that people want to live in. Uh, I went through and looked at a lot of, uh, areas in North Carolina that were actually losing people. People are moving out, and I kind of, answer this question, Mr. Town Manager, or maybe Alicia, this would be a good question for you. Say you live in a town, and your valuation of your house actually went down. Uh, say, say it went down twenty percent. Um, what, 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 what does that create for revenue neutral? Because we've never had to figure that out, with, if it goes backwards.
We did.
Oh, you did?
About, what was it, eight years ago or something? Twenty-fifteen.
Gotcha.
The values went down.
So, that, that would create a whole different scenario if.
In that situation, when your value, your total valuation goes down, um.
Would you ra, you'd have to raise your taxes? Right, it, it, it's just the opposite. Right, okay, all right, well, I'm glad we, I'm glad we didn't have to do that. But anyway, with that being said, can I get a motion to, uh?
I'd like to recommend a motion to approve the FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget ordinance with, with the tax rate of seventeen cents per one hundred.
All in favor? Mr. Behala, uh, Clarence, and we got three and all against, and Mr. Barber voting against it, so passes three to one. And I do need to say, um, that, um, he's not here to the.
Mr. Amburgi.
Mr. Amburgi's not here. He, he had family, some things in his family, so he's not here tonight, so.
Correct.
For that, I should've said that earlier. But, okay, so it passes three to one, thank you. All, all in favor except Mr. Barber. Okay, that brings us, thank you, Mike. That brings us to Indian Trail Complete Street, CIP, Mr. Hunsinger.
Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, tonight, we're gonna do, um, uh, do an update to the project, where we're at right now, and then we'll talk about the amendment to the CIP ordinance. So, currently, uh, we have, uh, submittals in the NCDOT, uh, and we'll talk about that here in a minute, and then we're gonna talk about water and sewer plans, and then we're gonna talk about utility coordination with our third-party providers. Um, so, uh, incident, NCDOT's submittals, uh, we have our submittals in for right-way certification, so they're reviewing it right now. Um, that means, basically, they're reviewing all the acquisitions, uh, the deeds, agreements, everything, um, that we negotiated with, with property owners. Um, the right-way reimbursement has been, um, also submitted in. Obviously, they're not gonna give us right-way reimbursement until we get the certification, but, again, wanna get both in at the same time, so they are aware that we're, uh, we're wanting to get some money back. Um, and then, uh, construction authorization, we do have plans in. Uh, the only thing we haven't, uh, submitted is the water and sewer plans, and I'm, I'll talk about that in a minute. So, right, uh, on your screen right there, that is the water and sewer, uh, design. That is just one sheet, uh, of the design. And so, as you can see, it's been a very complicated, uh, uh, project, as far as that is concerned. Uh, the Union County has been reviewing the plans, um, and so, where we're at now is final review. We had a meeting with, uh, the county and the, uh, our consultant to discuss any minor comments, uh, because basically, we're, we're at that point, no major, uh, design changes or anything. So, we wanted to address those minor comments, they've been addressed, so pretty much, they've kind of blessed that, so now we need to submit that with everything else. We submitted all the other plans, we just didn't, haven't submitted that because the county hasn't blessed it. But, that should be a quick review, because the NCDOT's, you know, they're gonna know the county blessed it, they're not gonna, they're kind of just a conduit between that, and they're just gonna put it in the file, and, um, and mo, keep working on the other ones, uh, but we, obviously, it's, it is a step in the process. All right, so I wanted to talk about, real briefly, the magnitude of the project. So, you've seen this scr, screen, this is the utility providers. So, this is Duke, this is Conterra, Windstream, um, MC, MCNC, um, Spectrum, and I think two others. Uh, another, Duke Energy Fiber is out there, so all these have to be, uh, updated, relocated. So, that's obviously first, that's what they're gonna be doing when they first get out there, do the work. And then they're gonna jump on the water and sewer. Now, some of that water and sewer will be able to be done simultaneously, uh, because some of it's off-site. Uh, if you recall, I told y'all, they're updating all the sewer in the Navajo Trail, uh, road, uh, area. Those residential homes that are behind the pharmacy and stuff, all that's getting new sewer, because they're on an old, uh, septic system. And so that was one of the capital projects the county had, uh, in the past, on their CIP. They're just kind of fast-forwarding it because we're doing this project. And, and then, we, we put our stuff in, which is stormwater, roadway improvement, signals, all that. And that's, again, one, one sheet, and that's the same sheet for each, each thing, so it kind of shows you a lot of things going on, and a lot of things that have to be, that have to be done, and in, and in a step process, so, uh, not easy project. So, water and sewer, you saw this slide last time, uh, just wanted to make you aware, the county has about one-point-five-million dollars in improvements that they will pay for. Obviously, we have to pay the invoice first, but we will be able to ask for reimbursement soon after, so we're not gonna have to sit on one and a half million at the, you know, at the end of the project. But again, we do have to pay for it first, uh, and we haven't had that agreement yet, because, again, they haven't blessed the pan, plan, so, again, the estimate hasn't been updated, because we weren't sure, again, if they were gonna change the plans based on their comments. So now that we can get the estimate finalized, what we'll come back to y'all with is an, uh, in a local agreement with the county for that, it's somewhat in a one-point-five million. It'll obviously be a different number than that, but it's around that, that amount. And then, uh, town portions is a half million, and that's because our, it's any stormwater infrastructure or the duct bank or anything like that, it's, it's, that's gonna be in the way, we have to move that water and sewer, so we split that, that is a reimbursable expense, uh, but all in tail, it's about two million dollars worth of work. All right, so that's really the, um, updates on the, the DOT and the water. Uh, last is the third party. We have, we have went back to them, because it's been a while since they gave us the design, as you saw in the other slide, to make sure we're not missing anything. So, we, we've engaged meetings that our consultant has with them, and I've sat in all these meetings, uh, to make sure we have everything that they need. Um, we did find out that, um, Conterra actually, um, doesn't have the consultant that we were dealing with, uh, on a contract anymore, and so the gentleman that's with Conterra, that actually works for Conterra, uh, didn't know anything about the project. So, uh, he's working on their design right now, he's assured us that it will not take long to get done. Uh, so, again, a hiccup that, you know, unfortunately unforeseen by anybody. Um, so, we've asked him to make sure we get the conduit count, uh, again, that's a process. I know some of these folks are gonna want more than one conduit, we're trying to narrow that down, and then it's a color scheme aspect, you know, everybody wants each conduit to be a different color, so they know exactly what, what's what out there, so we're trying to nail, nail down the color scheme. But again, that's not affecting the design review or anything like that, that's just the back-end stuff before we bid out the project. So, this is kind of the detail, uh, that, uh, we're incorporating. Again, you've seen a picture of the fifteen-way Duke, uh, Duke Energy Duct Bank, that's the bottom of your screen, that, those five circles, I mean, fifteen circles is the duct bank. We're gonna put nine conduits minimum on top of that, uh, duct bank, for our, the other providers, like Windstream, Conterra, and all them, because, again, we can't share, Duke's not sharing the fifteen-way, and don't ask me why they need fifteen conduits, uh, but that's what we gotta put in the ground. So, um, so we're at least building nine, we may have to do more, and we're trying to narrow that down as far as, uh, the, uh, third parties, but that's kind of what it's gonna look like. All right, so that's kind of the updates. All right, let's talk about amending the ordinance. Um, uh, staff is, you know, talking through our CIPs and stuff. We obviously knew that, that there was a CIF grant, there was two million still sitting out there that wasn't technically designated to a project. It was verbally designated technically to Phase Two of Complete Street. Um, so, knowing that we needed, uh, uh, other costs that are gonna be involved, uh, mainly the streetlights and stuff, I wanted to go ahead and get this into the, uh, project. Uh, we think it's a good idea to go ahead and do it, so, again, wanna spend the money rather soon rather than later, because you never know, um, state may pull it one day, so, if you set it on Phase Two, which ain't, you know, obviously several years down the road, you know, we, we don't wanna take that chance. So, we decided, uh, through staff, to come to y'all, and again, y'all don't have to approve this if you don't want to, but this is our suggestions, to go ahead and get this to me, in this project. All right, so, uh, what we're doing is, uh, the reason why we want the, the grant money in this project is we got. is we got three things going on, design coordination, which I'll talk about, right-of-way acquisition, which is technically not as, money-wise, is not enough in the ordinance right now, and then it's construction slash betterments. So design coordination, well, again, you saw those plans. You've got roadway design, which entails stormwater, traffic, paving, et cetera. You've got a signal design, which is actually a separate engineer stamped drawings. You have utility design, again, separate engineer stamped drawings, and UBO coordination with a separate engineer. Well, we're going to have to have those engineers on hand to call if there's questions from the contractor during their construction process. It's just, unfortunately, it's going to happen. And if we don't have a somewhat of a small slush fund to be able to utilize that and not have to come back every time, they want extra money because they spent time, you know, answering questions, sending emails, whatever, I mean, they're due that effort. So designated is a little bit of money for that effort throughout the project. Again, it's an arbitrary number, and you'll see in a minute. We'll get to that slide in a minute, but again, wanted to get some money in there in the ordinance just for that. All right, so right-of-way, right now, we're at two and a half million in the ordinance, but we're technically over this fiscal FY 53,000, just based on ongoing work. And then now we have the recent acquisition that y'all just approved of 30,000. So I put arbitrary, not arbitrary, but I put $100,000 into the, into that separate ordinance, on that separate right-of-way phase, put $100,000 in there just to cover those costs. Again, we've got 10, as you can see on the screen, 10 property owners, we're still, well, we've got nine now we're still dealing with. And we have no idea what that cost is, so we're going to be coming back to y'all to update this ordinance once we know those. So it's going to be an ongoing process, probably for the next year or two, Melanie. So that's just going to be, again, this document is a, it's going to be a fluid document, unfortunately, for the next few years. Any questions about that? Basically, we've got all these in the court system, we've sent the checks, I think most of them's probably Castor checks, and now we're just trying to set up mediation meetings with them to discuss anything extra they would like to have, per se. So, any questions about the right-of-way acquisition? Okay. All right, so the other thing is construction and betterments. We talked about streetlights and furnishings probably two budgets ago in a PowerPoint and everything, kind of saying that, look, you know, we don't want to use the Duke Energy typical streetlight. We want that, you know, again, this is downtown, this is going to be your brand-new downtown. We want something unique, something that nobody else has. And so we've engaged in some private firms, and we came up with, and you've probably seen on the renderings, they call it the Northport Acorn Light. And it's kind of like the one, the old-fashioned, but it's just kind of a more modern. And you see the rendering on your screen, that's kind of what it's going to look like once it's built. It's 20-foot tall, I don't know what the spacing is, but that's been basically laid out by designer foot counterwise and everything. I mean, that's what's going to light up the street. And so, and then also, we have furnishings that kind of goes along with the Northport design, which is a bench. Again, the bench is not going to be wooded, it's not a good image, but I couldn't get an updated one. It's actually going to be all steel, even the seating area. And then you've got trash disposal, whatever you want to call it, and bike racks. So we got a cost for that, and we actually got an updated cost on the streetlights. So last year, streetlights were about $50,000 less than what you see on that screen, 650K that it is now. That's about 80 to 90 lights. That's what you're getting out of that whole project area, even down through Unionville and Matthews. That's not just Indian Trail Road, you're getting the other legs too. Well, that's went up 50,000 just in the year. And as a caveat, as you can see on the note at the bottom, you know, if tariffs are not, you know, figured out, you know, these electronic drivers and LEDs that are part of those, that's not made in America. The rest of it's made in America, except for those, so if those go up, that price goes up. So that price right now is good till 2025, and then it will go up again. The furnishings, I didn't get an update on those, I did round up, they were 53,000, and I rounded up to 60,000. And then sign relocation, we've talked about, it's going to be a little over 200K, we talked about that before, but we haven't really put it in, into the project yet. So that's almost a million dollars right there of this 2 million that would be used, that's not reimbursable expenses. So the other thing that's, haven't been talked about, I've only mentioned it once to y'all, is the other additional utility work, I call private utility work, that's going to have to be done outside our right-of-way once the underground's put in. This is not a great picture, but you're going to have these, an electrical box or more or less a manhole out there right there at the end of our right-of-way. Well, you've got to have a service that goes back to there, and again, you're putting in new underground power lines. So you have to run a new service line up to the meter of that business. Well, you're going to have to hire a private contractor to do that. And so we're going to need some additional funds to cover that, because I don't know right now what the bid's going to come out as far as the construction costs. And until we know that, we really can't take away anything from the ordinance. Obviously, we hope that that extra 2 million supplements general fund, we can take some general fund down, but right now, I'm not recommending that, because again, I don't know where this bid's going to come out to be. I think we got a good estimate, but you never know once you start bidding something out. So here's the breakdown. The 66,919, that's just a number that we, I use because it rounds up the whole number you'll see in the next screen for the ordinance, makes life a little bit simpler as far as covered numbers. 100,000, we talked about, the 930 for Streetscape Amenities, we just talked about. And then the rest of it is the 90381 we would put in construction. And again, hopefully not have to use it, maybe supplement with general fund. But that takes you down to 2 million, and that's where it goes. So that's the breakdown right now, your previous values in the middle, this is where we're at right now with the ordinance, is 17 million. And that's the values that for design, right-of-way, and Streetscape, we are currently at. Remember, the Streetscape amenity, that 50,000 is a grant that we got from the state a couple of years ago. So we still use that, we've updated them, it's not went away. So, but just to be on the safe side, I'm not asking to take 50,000 away right now of the, what I've just talked about with the 930,000. We're going to keep that in there just in case prices go or whatever, something happens, I don't know. Again, I mentioned about tariffs, I don't know what's going to happen with that. So that obviously just brings it up to 2 million from what you were, from 17 to 19 million in the ordinance. So now, that's your breakdown, your ordinance, nothing's changed between your other funding sources. It's just you're changing the grant money from 5 million to 7 million, which is what was the stated memo in the packet. If you have any questions, we have to answer them.
I want to make some comments, I'll be all over the place, got a few things written down. You know, I wish it was a requirement, because on Facebook or social media, you'll see a lot of negative things that people weren't in the beginning of a process. I wish there was some way that we have people that are all-in when we start something and see how it progresses. And the reason why I say that is, at City Vision, the City of Concord presented, you know, a project, and it was kind of the trials and tribulations they went through in their project. And one of the things they brought up was how, when they started digging, how they unearthed sewer pipes that weren't recorded. So all of a sudden, they find something, and now they have to do something with it, and, you know, of course, costs went up, and all these other things that, you know, delayed the project, and all the pushback they got. You know, they said the council has been accused of stealing money and this, that, and the other. And, you know, if you see the plans, this is a big project that we're taking on, and, you know, it requires a lot of money. And, you know, it's not a comfortable situation for everybody. But also, the importance of, and I'm going to kind of dive back into something else, the importance of keeping a good staff together, and you made a comment about the consultant for one of the firms. You know, the consultant's gone, so you kind of, it's kind of a hiccup in the whole process.
Yeah.
So I just kind of say this to defend this whole process that, if approved, that we're going through, that I challenge the people of Indian Trail, you know, if you get on social media and you have something negative, say, come back and go through the whole process before you, or know why it may be some delays or something of that nature. But with that said, I just know when we take on a big project, and a lot of people in the town, you know, there's a lot of negative things out there, and it's hurtful for people to accuse you of things when I feel like they're not involved in the whole process, so.
Well, I would add to that, I would encourage the council, the mayor, and everyone, if you do get phone calls from people, and, you know, direct them to us, I mean, that's why the staff's here. I mean, I don't mind sitting with somebody and explaining the project and getting an understanding. I mean, that's why we're here, I mean, I hope the whole town doesn't come to my office, but, you know. I mean, that's why we're here, I mean, we're here there, and I get people all the time, stormwater project, everything. I mean, you know, I'm happy to sit down with them 10 or 15 minutes, I mean, I'm pretty sure I can get through it all, get them to explain it all, and it won't take a lot of time, but, and effort, but that's why we're here as a staff.
Thanks, sir. So we're now estimating the project to be 19 million?
Well, we don't know, I mean, again, we'd like to say it ain't going to be 19 million right now, but again, till we bid it, we really don't know.
Okay, we're putting more money in.
But yeah, we are, yeah, yeah.
The 10 million state grant, I think that was approved back in 2021, so it's been sitting there a while.
Yeah.
And the way it was broken down was, I think we had 5 million for Phase One.
Correct.
Which went to the burying the lines.
Correct.
And then we had another 2 million for construction from that state funds, I think that was in there. So now, we're taking another 2 million of that 10 million and putting it, so we got a total of, that state grant, we're now designating 9 million towards Phase One?
No, no, we, there's never been another 2 million before. This is just 5 million, and now we're adding 2 million, so it's only 7 million.
So 1 million was at Shady Bluff, so where's the other 2?
I think 2.
Because it was.
2 was, yeah, 2 was about the resurfacing, remember the five-year plan on the resurfacing? We designated some money for the resurfacing projects.
For which projects?
The resurfacing projects, remember, we designated some of that CIF grant money to compensate the power bill, because we couldn't do 30 streets a year, we just, yeah, yeah.
But I thought at one point we had some for Phase Two, and you said we're moving that along.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one that's been kind of sitting out there, and it hasn't been designated anything. So we felt like this would be the best, because we know this project's being bid fairly soon.
But, yeah, okay, so, but when we got the money, was there any rule that we had to use it in a certain timeframe?
I would ask the manager.
Not that I'm aware of, but I will tell you this, the state and the federal government doesn't like you to get a grant and just sit on it, and so Mr. Huntsinger is correct, the sooner we can use this money, the better we.
Yeah, the last thing we want to do, yeah, is just give a bad impression of, hey, you gave us money and it's sitting there, and we hadn't used it, so why give us more? Yeah, I understand that concept.
And I will give you a sidebar grant, we got a grant for a vehicle 18 months ago, and then got a note that if you had not applied for reimbursement by a certain day, you were not going to get it. Fortunately, we had already applied for reimbursement, now we're waiting for the check.
But clear with this is, we can do the streetlights and everything now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the last question, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing that, you know, eventually, you're going to have to, we're going to come back to y'all with is maintenance. Because again, these are going to be private, a private system, so you're going to have to have some kind of contractor on call if a light goes out. You know, you can't call Duke or Windstream anymore, and that they're going to power it, but it's your fixture now. But I think that's okay, I mean, again, we want this downtown to be something different. We don't want it to be cookie cutter, sorry, I couldn't say that. So anyway, anyway, sorry, go ahead.
I want to make a point, and it's been discussed just now about the cost and the escalation in the cost since we've originally started coming out with these numbers.
Yeah.
That's an example of why when we did our budget this year, the pressure we were under, we don't want to come up short, we've got to have enough money in place on all of our projects and future projects. So for those who are critical about, you know, what we've done, you know, we don't know in six months from now what something's going to cost, we just have to guess.
No, and I would point out, that CIF grant money does have interest earned. That's still sitting out there, that hasn't been designated anywhere. I don't know what the number is, but there has been a accrue in interest. So eventually, we're going to have to designate that somewhere, but we're not asking for that right now, for any project.
Okay, if there's no more questions, can I get a motion? Down there?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended Indian Trail Complete Street CIP ordinance as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous.
All right, thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Todd, you did a good job. Okay, street sweeper. Mr. McLemore's going to turn into a street sweeper?
And it's right outside, if y'all want to take a look at it.
I saw it.
I'm going to give a few opening remarks, and then I'm going to turn it over to Adam for the more detailed. I will tell you that the street sweeper is out there, if you want to see it after the meeting. We can't let you drive it unless you have a CDL. Fortunately, we have two employees that have CDLs, so we did not have to hire anybody else. It was just, you know, train them up, and here we go. So I want to take you back until, back to the time in April of 2024. If you remember, we were doing a budget meeting, much like the two budget meetings we did a few weeks ago. And what we typically do is when we talk through the budget, we talk about things that are in the budget, and if you approve the budget, these are the things that it's going to fund. And we talked about the street sweeper a little bit, we had probably a few-minute conversation about that. I think Adam talked about it a little bit, and Todd talked about it a little bit. And so we have a stormwater permit from the federal government, and that has certain responsibilities. Because we're a certain size, I think we call it an MS4 permit or something of that nature. And of course, there are reports that we have to send up, that Todd sends to the federal government on how we're staying in compliance with our permit. And there are various best practices we have to use from public education. If you're at Family Fun Day, you might have seen, if they had a booth out there, that. But one of the best practices involves street sweeping. And so when we talked about it at that meeting in April of 2024, you might recall that Adam said that we had been doing street sweeping, and we used to use a contractor to do that, and it became more difficult to get a contractor, as I recall. And then, we looked at renting it, and it became more difficult to get it when we needed it to have it done. So we put it in the budget. The original estimate was going to be 400,000, I squawked at that, so we got it down to 350, and I think Adam got it down another 20 or 30,000 dollars, so it was about $70,000 off what was originally requested. I recall it may have even been a demonstrator. We told you then that with the street sweeping, not only would we be able to use it when we needed it and have it at our shop when we needed it, but after we would have a parade or something like that, you know, there's candy all over the place on the streets, and when we have Family Fun Day, you put 10,000 people in a park, and there's, you know, some stuff to be done to clean up the park. And so we've been using it, you may have seen it along Highway 74 and along the streets. As I mentioned earlier, we did not have to hire anyone new to operate it, we got two CDL operators. And our latest time, I think we used it was just a few days ago after the Family Fun Day. Now, if you're interested in looking at it, I've already talked about that. If you want to know what types of stuff are they picking up, if you'll see Mr. McLam after the meeting, he will set a time where we'll go next door over to the Public Works facility, and we have a whole collection of stuff. And it's all part of not only protecting to handle stormwater, but also making sure that our community is clean and litter-free. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. McLam.
I'll really just answer any questions, or I can give you any more detail that was in the memo, if anybody has any. I'll really just answer any questions or I can give you any more detail that was in the memo if anybody has any or wants more detail about what we've actually picked up or haven't picked up.
You know, actually, I think we've heard this before.
Yep.
Couple of times, so I don't know that we have any questions other than.
All right.
Appreciate you, you know, you know, and listen, if I go buy a car or something, I want you and Mike to go with me if you can get that kinda money off of, off of whatever. That, I've tried to figure that out. What's seventy thousand off of four hundred thousand? Some money to, what?
It's almost one.
Oh, I know that.
You found the percentage?
What's the percentage you're saving?
It'll be twenty.
Uh, would it be? Anyway, next time I buy a car, come with me.
Okay.
Okay, see if you can get me twenty percent off that car will be, will be good. But can I get a motion then for?
Just, it's just for information, just to let you know what we're doing.
You're right, you're right. I'm sorry. That was FYI, so for your information. So, so is the next one, the building security.
Correct. Adam will be giving, talking about this. This is something, we live in a much more dangerous world than we used to. We do have issues periodically, not recently, with First Amendment auditors. We've had problems with people just making themselves at home and wandering the building, so just for a whole bunch of reasons, we needed to improve security in the building. You signed a contract about eighteen months ago and Adam will walk you through what we're doing.
Sure. So ever since we've moved in this building, we've been here about eight years. We've continuously progressed in some of our safety and security within the building. This has come about after multiple different trainings that have taken place here in the building, both with the sheriff's office and then also with some other private people that have walked through the building to help us look at different things. And then also just some things that staff has brought up over the years. So right now, what we are, we are in kinda the final phase of the security upgrades of what we have scheduled for right now. What we are gonna be doing is downstairs, if you walk down the, in the hallway downstairs, there is now a glass door leading into like the planning and public work side of the building over there. That door is gonna be replaced with a solid wood door. The two vestibules that go into the community room on the backside, they have a door on the hallway side. That was an original design thing for how we were gonna operate in this building and we don't operate the way that those doors were originally intended. So they're actually gonna come out to not create a closed vestibule right there and so that people can see forward and see that the community room is behind there. It'll allow for a little bit better flow back and forth from the hallway to the community center itself. At the other end of the hall, near the elevator, there's a cased opening right now. There's not a door there. We're gonna be putting a solid door matching the one that's gonna be on the planning side of that hallway. That's all downstairs. The main security upgrades that you're gonna be seeing are gonna be upstairs. If you look outside, our new fancy handrail out there, that's wood in the hallway tonight. When you come in, the next time you're in the building, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, will actually be framed in as a wall, so there will no longer be a railing there. It's gonna be a wall. It'll match what's on either side of the upstairs halls, or upstairs walls already. So it'll be two windows on each side and then another storefront door like what you see downstairs. So if you look at your screen, I'm gonna zoom out a little bit. This is what that view will look like. So when you're looking from the front door into that wall, this is what you will now see. What that'll allow is a secured access to the upstairs hallway. So somebody couldn't just come in the building, walk up the stairs and then be in the hallway, come in this room, walk in the back hallways and kinda get around. It kinda creates that very clear and distinct, this is the open public space during the day. Behind that space is the space for staff to be conducting staff business within the building. The other changes that are gonna go on upstairs kinda mirror what I just talked about downstairs. And that is on the Park and Rec Administration side of the wing. We're gonna be putting a solid core door as well there. Moving up one cased opening so that that conference room is behind that door, so that that, if y'all have been here in the building, you know that we use that conference room sometimes kind of as a little bit of a hallway if nothing's going on in it. It'll allow for that use to be a little bit better suited. And then also down at the other end of the hallway, near the elevator, there's gonna be another solid door put there in that cased opening as well. And the badge readers will be taken off of the engineering door and the finance door. And that is it. Some other small upgrades, but that's kinda like the main key things that are gonna be going on.
Very good. Any questions? Thank you, Adam.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to manager salary. Is, do we just go into a motion for that?
Yep.
Can, can I get a motion for the manager's salary?
Okay, then. I'd like to make a motion, make a motion to approve the adjustments to the manager's salary as follows. Six point two percent increase retroactive to July first, twenty twenty-four and three percent increase retroactive to August the first, twenty twenty-four.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. That brings us to a meeting, meeting change. And that is me. I've got a conflict at our next meeting, which is not this Tuesday, but the following Tuesday, I will not be here, which is fine. I, you can have, you're more than welcome to do the meeting. I've never missed a meeting as mayor, but if we could move it to Thursday, I could be here. And I hate to do this two times in a row or even ask for it two times in a row, because I didn't ask for it this time, but anyway, is every, would everybody be in tune with, with going from Tuesday to Thursday of that week? Is that good? And thank you. I get to spend time with my family. And to just tell you real quickly, it's Montross Camp. And I'll be in Chapel Hill with all my grandkids and, and it's something that we do for Father's Day every year. And I know, Adam, you'd like to be there because you're a big Duke fan. You'd like to come up to Chapel Hill and enjoy that with me. But, so can I, can, would somebody like to make a motion to change that from Tuesday to Thursday?
The twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth, is that what it is?
Let me get my stuff together. I'd like to make a motion to change the next meeting that was scheduled for June the twenty-fourth to June the twenty-sixth.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. All in favor? I guess I better get that first. Unanimous. Thank you. All right, that brings us up to Board Committee appointments. And I will say very quickly on the board, I can remember, it wasn't that many years back that we had trouble filling boards up. We just couldn't get enough people to be on boards and now we've got plenty of people on, that wants to be on a board, so I like to thank the, the public for wanting to do this. Unfortunately, we have people that are on these boards and they wanna come back. And a lot of these people were signed up for these boards when you couldn't get people to do it, so they're on there. So I'm gonna start off with the ABC Board and as you see, there's one person is up for, or their seat's up and they would like to come back. Judy has been on the board a number of years. And if anybody would like to, to add a name in there, you certainly can. I, I am the ABC Board Chairman and Judy's done a good job. With that being said, would anybody like to make a?
I don't know if we have a question or is?
Go ahead and make a nomination, appoint. Okay. I make a motion to appoint Judith Silverquit to Seat Three of the ABC Board with term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Can I keep going then or?
You, you, you can get, go on, go on to the next one. There, go ahead.
All right. Let's see. I make a motion to appoint Stephen Dotson to Seat Two of the Parks and Rec Committee with term expiration six thirty, twenty twenty-eight.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right.
I make a motion to appoint Rodick Watts to Seat Three of the Parks and Recreation Committee with term expiration June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Keep going.
Yes, well, yes, okay. And listen, if anybody else has somebody you wanna pop, throw in there, let us know. Go ahead, Todd, keep going.
All right. I make a motion to appoint Sydney Sandy to Seat Three of the Planning and Zoning Board with term expiration June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
All in favor? Unanimous.
I make a motion to appoint Cynthia Wiley to Seat Six of the Planning and Zoning Board with term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
All in favor? Unanimous.
I make a motion to appoint Shamira Ali to Seat Four of the Planning and Zoning Board with term expiration June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
All in favor? Unanimous.
I make a motion to appoint Philip Rapp to Seat Two of the Stormwater Committee with term expiration June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
All in favor? Unanimous.
I make a motion to appoint Alan Mosley to Seat Five of the Stormwater Committee with term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I would like to say for all the people that, that did, we would love to, to, there was just no seats open. There were no open seats. And hopefully, we'll have some soon. Cause I see people out there, I'd love to have you on there, I really would. And there's people on here that we just nominated, I think's done a good job, and I don't even know them, but I know you guys, you do a great job, but anyway. What now?
If you didn't get on this time, what's the rule? Do they have to reapply the next time that we? Okay, so be sure and reapply to get your name in there and so we can make a good effort to get you on a committee.
Very good. Moving on right along, let's see. That brings us to, there's no discussion, Adam's Mike Manager's Update. I didn't see. Thought he was gone.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Austin Brooks. It was good to see many of you out at Family Fun Day. It was hot out there, wasn't it? It's a big crowd. At the next meeting, I've asked Mr. Kramer to present a report about the results of that and I have also asked Ms. Ball that at our first meeting in July to give you an update on Citizens Academy, so. Some of the things that are going on, we are, thank you for approving the budget ordinance tonight. It really helps our staff. That gives us about two weeks to go ahead and shut down everything. I will tell you that the auditors will be coming to do some preliminary fieldwork next week and so that will certainly help them. We have issued decrees, I guess, to the staff and the leadership team that all essential spending was cut off on June first. So in other words, whatever you got, get your POs in, don't be coming up here at the last minute saying it's essential. And so I will say as a personal comment that the staff has really been excellent this year, as they have in previous years, but I'd say more so this year in not only demonstrating good quality cooperation and teamwork as we did the budget and not just asking for stuff to see if they would get it or not. And when we started to wind down the year, you know, we sent the word out that essential spending, POs are cut off on this day, et cetera, et cetera. And people have complied with that. To a point that we had a little situation here a day or so ago that there was like a five-dollar part that needed to be replaced. That one of the workers said, can I spend five dollars to get this thing fixed? We got water running out. And so they took the message seriously and we appreciate it. And you should too, because we wanna really make sure we finish with a good, strong finish, so. We've talked about that. I told you about the auditor. We will be closed for Juneteenth, which I think is the eighteenth. And of course, appropriate notices will be going out on that. We have got a potential industrial, light industrial over on Smith Farm Road that we're looking at for review for a large expansion. Over in the stormwater, those folks are very busy with the phase two projects. They're finishing the Mars, the Moss Cove Culvert Crossing and finalizing the Liberty Lane Channel Improvement right back over here. We had to do some discussions with some of the landowners to try to make that happen. We're also working, door hangers were sent out to residents adjacent to Bow Brook and Pioneer regarding the culvert crossing. I know that's very important. If the culvert blew out, it would create real problems in that area. So we're trying to get that fixed. That is a major upgrade. You've already gotten a report on the safety and security upgrades. We are doing some more upgrades to the building that we own, that, that the sheriff's office uses, so it's, if you haven't been over there lately and seen what's going on over there, you might wanna get up with Captain Mullis after this meeting and he'll be happy to, to brief you on that. Coming up at our next meeting, originally, we were gonna get a report from COG. I have reached out to Ms. Gardner to let her know that the meeting has potentially was changed to Thursday. I have not heard back from her. If she's not available to meet with us at our next meeting, we'll schedule her in July or August sometime over in there. Also, I think at your next meeting, Mr. Austin Brooks will be presenting a CRTPO report on some of his work. He and the mayor have done a good job representing the town and we've been very successful because of their, of their efforts. We'll also bring you the updates on the estimates for the pickleball court over at Crooked Creek Park. Those are some of the major things that'll be going on at the next meeting. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. That brings us to Council Comments. Ms. Cog?
Councilmember Buhollick. All right, thank you all for coming. I just wanna say congratulations to all the graduates. I was able to attend both Porter Ridge and Sun Valley due to the weather and them rescheduling in the morning and evening and just very proud of all of the graduates we have in our area. Other than that, everyone drive home safe. It sounds like it's storming out there, so just be careful. Councilmember Barber.
Yeah, congratulations on all the grads. Also, Happy Father's Day coming up to everyone. I was blessed to have a great dad, so, and I think, don't forget the VFW BBQ over here Saturday. And I think later in the month, I saw a sign, there's gonna be a gun show, I think, at the VFW later in the month, so watch out for that. Also, Kimberly's Place Foundation is having a, hosting a Night of Hope fundraiser at the Union County Ag Center on June, June twenty-eighth from five to nine P.M. If you want more information, check out their Facebook page. They're really doing some great work in regards to mental health and things like that in the area. So anyway, have a blessed evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Gay.
Thanks to everybody for coming and again, also congratulations to all the, to the graduates. Thank you all for your understanding about the budget. We've had a lot of criticism and these crazy sites on the internet that say things that aren't true. But, you know, we, we do have a triple A credit rating. And Mike, you may agree with me, isn't our credit rating right now better than the United States government?
I would not be surprised.
Yeah, we've been downgraded by two different major, and Alicia, is that the case? Yeah, we have a better credit rating than the United States government because, you know, the way our town, our country has been managed. And so that's important if we, we need to borrow money, if we have emergencies, that sort of thing, if we ever have to go out for a bond. So, you know, we're a well-managed town. We, we stick with our commitments. And when we pretty much give somebody a commitment, we do it. We don't haggle about it and that sort of thing, so. You got a well-managed town. So I hope you all are very careful going home tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Austin Brooks.
Hey. So I'd like to say Happy Father's Day to everyone coming up. I hope you don't get mad, but the word is that I won Father of the Year this year and for the last twenty-five. and for the last 25 years, I won Father of the Year. So hopefully, y'all aren't mad at that, but do what I do. Congratulations to all the graduates. Congratulations to my niece Angel, who is going off to school to be a veterinarian. Congratulations to the scholarship recipients for Rotary. We have Emma Daniels, Gracie Laney, Claire Crabs, Cramps, Ella Kellogg, and this year there was a scholarship for, it was a recipient of, there's a gentleman that is from Union County, went to Sun Valley High School, Dale Haywood, and he had a promise of tomorrow from a, a book that he wrote, a scholarship, and that went to Elizabeth Yaddam, something closer. She knows, she got the money. She knows who she is. I want to say thank you to the Parks and Rec Department for the Family Fun Day. Those people, the employees, they put in long, hot days to make that happen and for that success. And also, you know, they're probably starting, or probably started already for the next one, right? So there's a lot of planning that goes into there. I hope everyone had fun. Again, growing up in Indian Trail, the only thing we used to have was the sliding board out at Indian Trail Elementary School, you know, that hot metal sliding board where you end up as a piece of bacon by the time you get to the bottom of it. So it's, it's, it's great to see the parks and the fun and all the things we have. And also, lastly, you know, I always say, call the town if you have any questions, but I also say, please be patient. If you call up here and someone doesn't call you back in the first day, just remember, we are working with a low tax rate, and, you know, they do the best with what they have, and, you know, we get the staff, or we get the staff, the people that we do based on our, the money that we bring in. So please be patient, but call up here and get your answers. With that said, thank you, and everybody have a good evening.
Mayor, come.
Just, Craig, I don't have a hearing today tonight. Did you say, did you have a niece went to Yale?
You want me to repeat all that? No, sir. Her, her name is Angel.
You know, I, I thought you said I want to congratulate my niece in jail. And I thought, well, wait a minute. Now, now, that, that didn't, that didn't sound, so that's why I just wanted to get a clarification on it.
That's how it comes up on the little...
And notice, I do have this earpiece in, so anyway, I'm sorry, but thank you for clarifying that. All right. Again, as everybody's mentioned, barbecue Saturday, that's gonna be a good time, lots of fun things to do. Fun day, great job Hayden and staff, can't say enough about it. Juneteenth celebrations tomorrow in, in the park. So if anybody would like to come out there tomorrow, I'm sure there'll be some fun stuff going on. I'll be out there. Congratulate to the, to the grads. I know that that got postponed today, even though we canceled our, our meeting on Tuesday. That's your fault, Chris, so we cancel our meeting on Tuesday, and then they cancel it, make it on Wednesday. But of course, who knew it was gonna rain like it was gonna rain? And I was stuck in that storm we had the other day. It was, it was quite bad. And I just want to make a quick announcement, and I don't think we, we've mentioned this. You know, last we heard on Monroe Road, and I hope it, it's okay to say something about Monroe, it's not okay to say anything about Monroe Road.
Not yet.
Not yet? All right. Well, I'm not gonna say, I'll just leave you guessing. How's that? What, next meeting I can? Okay. All right. Give, give some, some good news, I think, on Monroe Road. So with that being said, thank y'all for coming, and appreciate the ones that always come. I've staff yours second to none, and if I can get a, a motion to close, I would appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn.
All, all in favor? Unanimous. God bless everybody. Thank you.